Newmarket Town Council meetings, please welcome, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. First on the agenda this evening, is there anyone that would like to speak? Oh, before I do that, Councilor Nizarro is out on business, and there is one agenda change, just for people. Resolution 2016-17, which was amending the administrative code for the creation of a Department of Buildings and Grounds has been added, and we'll be doing that after the town administrators and the committee reports. And now, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Please come on.
Good evening, everyone. Some of you know me, some of you don't, but I just wanted to drop by and introduce myself as your new state rep for Newmarket, Newfields area, District 17. My name is Charlotte DiLorenzo, and I was sworn into office last month, and we're getting things into gear for a very exciting year in legislature. And I can come back with my contact information once I get it from the state. Okay? Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good luck with that. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Seeing none on closed public comment at 7:03. Next on the agenda, do I have a motion to accept the December 21, 2016 regular meeting minutes, please?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any changes, questions? Please call a roll.
Council Burns.
Aye.
Council Bowden.
Aye.
Council Pike.
Aye.
Council Thompson.
Sorry.
Council Weinstein.
Aye.
Council Levy.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
And do I have a motion to accept the December 21, 2016 non-public meeting minutes, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any changes? Please call a roll.
Council Burns.
Aye.
Council Bowden.
Aye.
Council Pike.
Aye.
Council Thompson.
Aye.
Council Weinstein.
Aye.
Council Levy.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
And Mr. Administrator, would you like to introduce our guest?
Sure. Well, I was just going to have some other items before we get to the presentations. First, I am happy to inform the town council that Chief Tru has announced that two promotions created by the retirement of former Chief Seer. First, Rich Bodett has been promoted to the position of Lieutenant, replacing Chief Tru. Lieutenant Bodett has been employed with the Newmarket Police Department for approximately 23 years. He has a degree in criminal justice from Hester College. He's worked in patrols up until 2012, when he was transferred to support services, where he currently holds the rank of Detective Sergeant. Since being transferred to detectives, he has been responsible for managing personnel within the division to include six full-time dispatchers, one detective, and one school resource officer, all part-time employees, including the department's police prosecutor. He also serves as a liaison between the department and the circuit court. He handles criminal arraignments, as well as the grand jury process, and he serves as the department's spokesperson in chief's absence. Second is the promotion of Greg Jordan to the position of Sergeant. Sergeant Jordan has been employed at the Newmarket Police Department since February 1999 through July of 2005, when he left to take a police officer's position with the Mashpee, Massachusetts Police Department. While in Mashpee, he was promoted to the rank of Master Officer and was one of the department's field training officers. He returned to New Hampshire in 2008 after accepting a police position with the Stratton Police Department, and ultimately was promoted to the rank of Corporal. He returned to Newmarket in October 2012, and he is currently the field training officer for the department. He recently graduated from Command Training Services mid-management course at Roger Williams University. I wanted to let the council aware, as the representative was here earlier, that with the beginning of the new year also becomes the beginning of the new legislative session. One bill that has been introduced by Representative Murphy of Bedford is to allow the seven towns that operate under the town council form of government, which are Newmarket, Durham, Bedford, Merrimack, Lundey, Derry, and Hooksett, to be able to determine for themselves if they'd like to have their town clerks appointed or elected. This was a point of discussion, as Council Weinstein will remember, of the last charter commission. The cities and towns, in the 1970s, they adopted, the state adopted home rule for cities and towns to determine how to best form their government. This bill would clarify the way that those seven towns operate under RSA 49D, and whether or not, again, their clerks can be appointed or elected. This is enabling legislation, so any change would have to go before the voters in the form of a charter amendment, and just keep the council apprised on that. In my, not in my written report, we had a, you'll have tonight for the first reading resolution, 2016-17, which is the Community Development Block Grant for Great Hill Terrace. The Newmarket Housing Authority has requested that we submit an application to the New Hampshire Community Development Finance Authority for $500,000 to upgrade this facility's on Great Hill Terrace. There is no financial impact to the town. We just have to apply for it on behalf of the housing authority. They have secured the services of a grant writer, who will be paid through the proceeds of the grant, so there'll be no staff time, other than what we're basically working with the council to get it approved. On the next meeting on January 18th, the council will have to hold a public hearing and accept input on the Community Development Block Grant, as well as some other housing regulations that are required for the federal guidelines. After that, they'll be voting whether or not to apply for the funds. At that point in time, we, again, as we apply, it's a very comparative grant. We may not get it this year, but it sort of gets us in the hopper to try to get it in the future years. I believe, Council Thompson.
Council Thompson.
Can you just, what the ownership of Great Hill Terrace is?
That's owned by the Newmarket Housing Authority.
It is?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So, the first item is, I'm happy tonight to introduce the town council, Lisa Ambrosio, who is the Finance Director for the school, and will be the Finance Director for the town starting on March 1st. Lisa comes from the town of Amherst, New Hampshire, where she served as the town's Finance Director, and she previously worked for the Amherst School District as their business administrator. Do you want to come up to the podium and just introduce yourself?
Hello. Put a face to the name, I guess, why I'm here tonight, but I'll be seeing more of you in the future, and looking forward to working with the team on the town side, as well as school. I recently opened the door between the offices, so I'm making some moves, so looking forward to working with both groups and getting to know the rest of you here. All right. Great.
Thank you very much.
Questions or?
Nice to meet you.
What do you, I'd be curious, just kind of, what are your, what are your focuses right now? What are you getting?
Well, in the short term, right now, I'm getting through the budget for the school side of things, and then I have dabbled a bit on some of the open items over on the town side, but even talking about getting a combined email and how I'm going to work some of the logistics, so I'm just trying to, it's on the horizon that I need to be doing these two things, and I'm mapping out how I'm going to transition over and have my workday integrated, and preparing the school people that, you know, it's, my time is going to be heading over that way. So that's kind of what I've been doing, and meeting with Steve and Meredith. I've only been here since, phew, end of October, and I feel like it's been some time, just the saying, hit the ground running, I have. I just hit and I'm just going and going, but it's been, it's been a good start, I believe, so, for me, and I think for the others, so it's been going well.
And I know Matt Angel, who's the contracted Finance Director, has been meeting with Lisa.
Yes, that too.
Daily when she's here.
And he catches me in the hall, if not.
Yeah. And projects that he's working on and bringing her in, so.
Yep, yep. So.
Quick question?
Sure.
Actually, two, but they're not that. I'm assuming you've done town and school before?
Yes, yes.
Have you ever done?
Not at the same time. So this is, this is new for, I think, a model for the state for the future, but I'm used to jumping in on a lot of new things. I've worked in the past on one of the first school districts to do a consolidation, without any guidance, done that. I was out in Wilton-Linborough, we had multiple school districts, I combined them into one. So I'm used to taking on new initiatives, and I, and I think the key will be communication and making sure expectations are in line and everyone's working together. And I, I will not be shy to say, if something's really going awry, and I, it's too much to keep up with, or the priorities are not, or they're inconsistent, or something, or I'm not sure where we want to go, and that's where I'll look to Meredith and Steve to make sure we're keeping things on track.
Which towns have you?
Amherst, for town side. I have a longer history for school side, honestly.
How long was the town?
Over two years, just over two years. And the time I was there, too, I did a consolidation of financials, a new financial software, I should say, coming in, not a consolidation. So, you know, pretty intense work there as well.
And the only other question I have was, somebody said something about the town combining software and the computer systems, so can you explain, like, how that's kind of?
Well, one of the things is to look at whatever package might be, so seeing what's out there, it would be perhaps a parent company, where you would have a dropdown, where you go, they would have to stay two separate sets of books. So you have the school books and the town books, because it's, it's slightly different financials. The town is really driven by revenues, and the school gets their money from the town, so there's a very different slant on the town side compared to the school. But I would envision that the software could be comparable, but you would still have to have a way to log out a one into the other through the same software, if, if that is what it is, but I have to look into what these different packages are, because, once again, I don't know that there's a model like it in New Hampshire. Now, I'm told in other states, in Maine, they've done this, and perhaps down Mass, I'm not sure.
Jersey, New York.
But, oh yeah, but, so it's commonplace in other areas, not in New Hampshire, so I have to assume that these software packages will permit that, and that's what I envision happening, but they will definitely have to be separate sets of books.
So are we in the process, Steve, of looking to combine?
We're looking at first, well, twofold. One, we're looking at replacing our own system, and then making sure it works with whatever the schools would need to, we do, would need as well. That won't happen till the next fiscal year, because it's in the proposed budget, so it wouldn't be happening till after July 1.
Plus the timing to get your foundation of what's, what's going on and how it will look together.
So they're still independent?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Yes.
And there's completely separate departments, totally. It's just we're having one individual being the department head of two different departments at this point. And just for comparison, the town of Amherst is actually larger than Newmarket. It's about 11,000 people, where we're about 9,000 to 10,000. Budget-wise, it's, but it will be exactly the same. They've got about $11 million, and that's what we're proposing for this year.
The reason I asked about the software is because we've been told that there was going to be an aggregate, and it's cost savings, and I was just wondering if that was, is that really accurate, or is it whether we're going to upgrade our software and the school has your software, and they're going to, I mean, if they're not?
I guess, I'm questioning, what, the savings on the software, the savings on the operations?
I think the system, I thought we were going to be upgrading all, that was my impression.
Yeah, no, I mean, software, the reason we're upgrading it is because they're not servicing it any longer, because we have Munismart.
So when we upgrade that, it's still going to, it's really going to be tailored for the town, correct?
It depends on what system we get. There's different programs out there, there's Munis, there's AD.
It would have to work for both.
Right.
And it, you know, our hands would be tied a bit by the software vendor, if they're looking to, it's a maintenance fee generally for the future, so are they going to charge a separate maintenance to keep two sets of ledgers up? Or will they look to say it's one community, one parent? But I have a feeling the software, cost of the software itself is not where a savings is going to come, just in my gut. If I was a software vendor.
Yeah, any upgrade in software is going to be an expense.
Yeah.
That's.
So where do you see the savings?
Just in consolidated, my position is really where it's going to come down to.
Okay. Thank you. The next item on my report is that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent Schools is here this evening to present to the town council the, what the proposal is for the school district on the facilities upgrade, so I'd invite the superintendent to come up, discuss this with the council, and answer your questions.
The good news is I'm not going to walk you through this entire presentation. I'm sure you've all had the opportunity to read it, and so I don't want to take an hour of your evening to walk through that and answer all the questions, but I did want to make sure you'd received a copy, just to highlight, it's a just under $39 million bond proposal that the school district is moving forward. We intend to have the, Budget Committee is planning to look at that Monday night at 7:00 PM. There's an informational session this Saturday, again, I think this is in here, towards the back of your packet. There's an informational session this Saturday at 10:00 AM at the junior senior high school. Next Thursday is the public hearing. That is also at 7:00 PM at the junior senior high school, and then there are a couple more informational sessions scheduled for Thursday, January 26th, at 7:00 PM at the elementary school, and on February 15th, which is a Wednesday morning, at the town hall. And so that one's at 9:00 AM deliberative session, February 4th. The estimated tax impact information is in here. First year, as I know you all would be aware, is typically an interest-only payment, so that year is a lower payment of $1.33 is the projection, and then subsequent years, and the school board at this point is contemplating a 30-year bond proposal, and so the remaining years would be $3.15 per thousand tax impact, above and beyond the current taxes. So, that's the brief synopsis, but hopefully, if you have other questions, there's a Newmarket School Projects website, that's linked in the back of here, you can go there for additional information, or come to any of the informational sessions. There are further questions, don't hesitate to email me, or members of the school board or Facilities Committee, and we encourage people to step out and ask those questions. We want to be giving people the information they need to make an informed decision. That's it.
That was quick.
I told you.
Wow, pages for the.
That's right. I know you can read. Doing my part. Very efficient.
Do you mind if I ask you a question?
Sure.
Okay. I'm not going to get into the, I guess, the weeds, because I have questions about some of the things in the construction, but I guess this is not the venue, but I would like to know how they arrived at the 30-year bond.
Yeah, that's, that's a school board question, but largely it came from public information sessions and the feedback that people were offering at those sessions that we held through the fall. You know, it's additional interest payments that you're going to be making over 30 years versus a 20 or 25-year, but it's also a long-lived asset that we expect to be around for 30 to 50 years at the least, and so the sense was that we heard, again, that the board heard from community members, was that it made sense to spread those dollars out, so that it's hitting people who are going to be taking advantage of the schools through that time period.
Do you, do you know what the difference was between?
It's not in here. My recollection is that it was about $200 a year, tax impact on an average $250,000 home.
315, two you don't?
Do you remember that? I don't have it with me. I can find that for you and pass it along, certainly.
Okay. And I had one other question.
Sure.
If that's okay. Actually, I had a few, but I'm not going to ask them.
My recollection, so don't quote me, but my, my image is just over $4, which netted about a $200 tax impact on a $250,000 home.
So it would have been roughly another dollar, give or take?
Yes.
Do you know what the engineering and architect costs were as a percentage of the construction?
So they're, they're about 7.5% of the architecture and engineering fees, all in.
And, so, if there's, we go out and take the bond, and there are any overages, I saw that you had a dollar amount for contingencies. In the event that those contingencies go over what you've got annotated here, what would you do in that situation?
Well, that's why you have a Facilities Committee and a Clerk of the Works, and you have regular project meetings, so that you are up to speed on that throughout the process. If you run into major hurdles, then you figure out how you can find some valued savings within the project. You look at where you can trim or adjust the project to stay within your budget. You don't have the license to, you don't have the license to exceed the budget. What you bond is what you bond, and if you don't expend that on the project, it gets returned to taxpayers. That's how it works.
Okay, so there would be no increase? That's, that's the maximum it would be?
That's the projected maximum, yep.
Okay. And my other question was, oh, I apologize, Council Thompson, I'm sorry.
I was just going to jump in and give you a potential tax impact, if you, because I have.
Sure.
With the numbers here, so, I mean, again, we'll, we'll get this out at the, at the public hearing and whatever, but if, for instance, on an average home that we use of $250,000, $3.45 on the tax rate is 8.63 a year.
Yeah, $3.15, so that we projected at 788.
So I just happened to run it at 3.45, but the, and that's, that's on the 30-year.
Correct.
Sorry, that's on the 20-year.
That should be on the 30-year.
$3.45 per thousand is about 8.63.
Okay.
Okay? 3.45 on the, on the 30-year loan would be lower, at about 7.50 a year. So it's about a $200 difference. I'm kind of backing up what I think you threw out, was a $200 difference.
Yeah.
Per year. The trick for me is that it's $200 more a year to do it on the 20-years, but we're paying it for 10 years less, and $7 million in interest less, and that's 7 million that if we can afford it, I would rather see doing other things. And I guess my only other, my only other input would be, the New Hampshire Bond Bank typically does 20-year loans.
They do, up to 30.
For a reason. They do up to 30, but, but the typical is, is 20, and I think the reason for that, so, sorry.
Yeah, I think it depends on.
Too long, it's just that, that extra 7 million and paying, paying more and taxing it for 10 years longer, it's kind of like, oh, wait a minute.
And I think it's.
And that, to me, is first rule of finance, you don't, you don't do it.
It's every community's dilemma, right? There used to be state aid, and so the bond bank was typically issuing much lower bonds in the past as well, and so I think it's always a balancing act, and, again, I think the, I'll certainly pass that along to the board, and I'm sure they'll be getting other input.
I'm sure.
Through the process.
I'm sure they will. Thanks.
My last question tonight, which won't, isn't, has nothing to do with all the pages we had, has to do with, has there been any kind of anticipated budget increase for the schools? So you're increasing the size of the facilities?
Yeah.
So we know what the cost theoretically is going to be for the facility. Staffing, things of that nature, fuel, all of those things that go into running the facility. Has anyone run any kind of estimate as to how much that will increase the budget?
So we don't anticipate that fuel costs are going to increase, because even though we're adding square footage, our systems will be much more efficient than in the current systems that we're operating that are 30-plus years old, and where we have air handlers that are equally aged. So we had EEI actually engineering ran some numbers, and our, I'm forgetting the names, of the gentleman who came in and did our mechanical, electrical, and plumbing engineering reports as well, but they also did some projections based on that. Electrical costs, as in all schools, are projected to increase. We're using more technology, we have more devices in play, where it's just part of how we operate today, and so electrical costs will likely increase, not on a square footage basis, but really on a, on a user basis, based on the way that we use technology today. My guess is that we'll be paying pretty much for a custodial position through those energy savings on an annual basis, and I anticipate that we'll need, by the time the high school project is finished in 2021, an additional custodian to manage the additional square footage, if we want to maintain the cleaning standard, the level of cleaning standards that we have today.
And so one custodian is what you project for staffing?
That's correct, because otherwise, the staffing is based on enrollment, it's not related to the size of your building, it's related to your program, and the building is, buildings are essentially being right-sized to deliver the program that we're delivering today. If enrollment increases by 100 kids, then we'd be having a different conversation about staffing, but I can't tell you that today.
Okay. So give or take, if population stays consistent, you're anticipating roughly, other than electricity, no budget increases to run the new school facilities?
That's basically the story, based on what I've looked at with our engineers and the reports that folks have given to us. You know, at, at the elementary school, we're trading in modulators for equivalent square footage. It's really not an additional square footage increase, it's really just a, bringing it into the actual building, so there's not an additional cost to that. At the junior senior high, we're adding kitchen and cafeteria, but kitchen doesn't really add to our custodial cleaning, that's maintained by the kitchen staff already, so I'm really not projecting. You know, we've also got, in the fact that we won't have six lunches at the elementary school, there are some net savings to our food service program. I mean, there, there are a variety of ways that you can look at this equation, and I think, as a committee, we've looked at most of them. I can't say we've done them all, but I'm anticipating that the energy savings should pretty much offset the cost of a custodian, and that's what we're talking about moving forward.
Council Weinstein.
First of all, I just want to say thank you for sharing all of this information, and, not just in this venue, but in all of the many meetings and venues that you've opened yourself up to in our community, so I really appreciate that. Just along the energy question, where we're doing these upgrades, has there been any discussion about anything like solar, or, you know, adding anything like that to help?
So, so not in terms of this piece, but those are pieces that can certainly be looked at on, basically, a pay-for-themselves basis. There are lots of plans where you can do that, performance contracting essentially is the mechanism, and so there are opportunities to do that, that would be outside of the construction project, because regardless, we're still going to have to upgrade all the interior pieces, you're still going to need a boiler system to, for, for heating through the winter season, you're not guaranteed that solar's going to work. We know that, you know, we're not going to get away with geothermal on the sites that we have without excessive costs, because there's a lot of ledge. It's just, so solar really is an option, I guess wind potentially could be an option moving forward, though, you know, you know as well as I do, that there are a lot of regulations related to that, but I think, we think there are performance contracting opportunities to look at moving forward.
Well, seeing no other questions, I'm glad to hear that the budget's going to stay the same, so, thank you for coming in, I appreciate you taking the time.
You're very welcome, thanks.
Thank you. And our final presentation tonight is MRI has completed the efficiency study, and the council has reviewed the draft, and they are here this evening to present a summary of their findings. Passing to the council now, a four-page document, which just outlines those, for your information, so you don't have to go through the entire book to see all the changes.
Thank you.
And, so I'd ask Alan Gould from MRI to come up and make the presentation.
Do you mind if I have the team join me at the table? Maybe we can move the podium down and just put the.
Get in the lights? Actually, we should send those back to the TV.
Ezra.
We should be okay with that. Do you want the, do you want the lights dim?
Um, it's up to you, folks.
I don't think it'll, I don't think it'll make a difference at home. I can, when we see it, if it looks light, we can deal with it.
Actually, it's the opposite. Much better.
Thanks.
That was really dim dim.
Yeah, that was pretty dim. All right. Well, good evening. As you may remember, my name's Alan Gould, I'm president of Municipal Resources, Inc., and I served as the project manager on this project, and with me tonight is Steve Daley, he was the team leader. Bruce McDougall was, did handle police, and George Klaba handled fire. Also involved with the project, but unable to be with us tonight, Dave Hanlon handled DPW and Environmental Services, and Carol O'Leary handled planning, economic development, and aside from his role as, as team leader, Steve also handled many of the town hall internal functions. So with that.
Steve, did you, did you announce, I can't recall, did MRI did an overview of the entire town or?
Yeah.
Departments, okay, just so people out there.
And we'll, first couple of slides, we'll address a couple of those things. It's a short slide presentation, if it's okay with you, I'd suggest that we just run through the slides, and we may comment on a couple of them, I'll ask specific team members, and then we'll be glad to get into any questions you have, into any more detail once we get through the whole thing, if that's okay with you folks, your show.
Thank you.
Great, so, as, as mentioned, we did an analysis of services. The purpose of the project was to provide an independent and objective evaluation. We were really looking for opportunities to improve effectiveness and efficiency, reduce duplication, maximize use of resources, contain or reduce future costs, and enhance sustainability. We used in-service subject experts, technical reviews and assessments were done through document review, site visits, interviews, and research into alternatives. Departments reviewed were Town Administrator, Finance, Town Clerk, Tax Collector, Planning and Code Enforcement, Police, Fire, and EMS, Public Works and Environmental Services, Information Technology, Recreation, and Human Services. Our overall assessment is that operations function quite effectively and efficiently. You have a pretty traditional structure. You've taken a conservative approach to staffing. Staff is competent and dedicated, and you're at marginal staffing levels. One of the takeaways is, the good news is that you're a pretty lean organization. The bad news is, you're a pretty lean organization, which means you really have to watch what happens going forward. So any little bit of savings you can get out of any of these recommendations, anything you can do to look down the road, regional partnerships, that's all going to be really helpful because you're, you're at marginal levels right now. We do see that there will likely be incremental staffing increases depending on demand for services. Collaboration with the school district, we think, is going to be essential, and that'll be a trend that you see throughout New England. And regional partnerships, you know, New Hampshire's like the last bastion, and we're probably about the last to be involved in regional partnerships in other places, particularly down south and out west. That really is the norm, but in New Hampshire, in, in New England, it really isn't. So you're going to have to stay ever vigilant for those opportunities. In the near term, again, town and school district collaboration. We've talked about it previously with you folks, we've talked about a shared finance and HR director, and a shared facilities manager, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. Shared finance director, and you met, you met your new finance director tonight on the school side. Typically, this would consolidate many of the primary functions normally associated with the school business administrator and town finance director. And as we understand it, the implementation of that is underway. You already talked about a crucial piece of that will be the software that you use to integrate those services. It's been done other places, it can be done, it's just a matter of implementing it appropriately. So the shared facilities manager, you have, you know, the school district, you have buildings, you have grounds, you have mechanical systems, those same things exist within the town framework as well. And then you add custodial care, maintenance, capital planning, repair, procurement, modification, replacement. Those are really the things that we believe that a building and facilities manager should be focused on. So it's facilities-related and commodities purchasing. It's coordination of maintenance contracts and developing maintenance contracts where they may not exist. It's sequencing capital repairs, we think that's important, and a lot of people tend to miss that. If the school's doing their own thing and the town's doing their own thing, there's no sequencing, it all hits the pocketbook or the wallet at the same time. That presents obvious opportunities for economy of scale when you look at school and all of the town functions. And maybe if you're able to get some regionalization done with purchasing, we think that there is, there can be some savings found with opportunities for economy of scale. Buildings and facilities-related capital budgeting and planning. This would kind of be your buildings and facilities expert as it relates to budgeting for these things down the road. And then oversight of major building projects. In the long term, we think you folks need to really monitor opportunities for inter-local partnerships. And that's regionalizing or providing regional fire, rescue, and EMS services. Purchasing is going to be important, public safety dispatch services to neighboring communities. We did look at this, the opportunities for you to perhaps get some free dispatching by Rockingham County. And that's apparently not a viable option at this point. It may be at some point down the road, but we think that you may have opportunities to do, to offer your services to other folks. And I think that you're going to have to stay really kind of, that's not just to visit it once a year, that's continually look for partnerships. As far as the administration goes, we think that, you know, there may be opportunity to work on council administrator interface in the Town Clerk, Tax Collector Department. We know that you've made a return to quarterly utility billing. I think when we were originally here, you had just changed to monthly billing, and that caused a greater workload. So there's a return to quarterly utility billing. Update software applications, maybe that would allow for more automation. And consider automated phone answering. And it didn't make the slide, but in, in addition to the automated phone answering, or whether or not you do it, you could look at a senior volunteer perhaps to help guide people when they come into town office. I think Steve Wood is an ombudsman in the, in the report. And that's something we see in a lot of places, it tends to work pretty well. People enjoy that. IT, it is, it looks like you have some deficiencies there as far as backups. So we think that partnering with the school district for mutual backup in IT folks. School system has an IT specialist, town has an IT specialist, and we think that they probably could back each other up and maybe complement each other to some degree. Community development, we think you ought to consider separating planning and zoning from code enforcement. Update the technology, go for mobile, efficiency. There are so many things that are done from a code enforcement standpoint, all by, many are done by different people, but on the same platform, and there's computer software that allows that. Should give some consideration to cloud-based GIS. There's some expense out the door, but it leads to efficiency, and people are expensive. So software is not as expensive over the long haul. Look to the future in support of growth. Regionalize or provide code enforcement services to neighboring towns. We think this is another big opportunity. In the last week, I've had calls from two communities, not right in this region, but looking for us to provide code enforcement and building inspector services. We can't staff those quickly enough. These people are typically looking for interim services, or they're looking for us to provide a long-term solution. And my, my first advice is always, did you check with your neighboring town? And it's getting harder and harder to find these folks. You folks are in a pretty good position where you may be able to contract and actually generate some good revenue for your community. Some police takeaways. Make more use of websites, surveys, and other media to connect with the public. Research the cost of a fire suppression system for police headquarters. We know that's a lot of money, but we still think that we had to mention it, given the fact that you do lock people up over there, and you do have computer systems, and you do have some significant and sensitive records. Expand the capacity and training for dealing with community emergencies. I think Bruce is going to speak a little to this as we get to the end of the slide. Monitor personnel turnover and adjust to maintain trained workforce as a cost savings initiative. You want to try to at least keep pace with your, your competition, if not a little ahead of them. Sometimes it's not all about the money, it's about the development, the opportunities you provide for the same money that they're all already being paid. Revisit the supervisor work scheduling to maximize hours when supervisors are working. And implement an alarm ordinance. You'll see that on the fire side as well, and we'll talk about that again later. This is an ordinance that you can do, you know, this is really low-hanging fruit. And you say, it's not just to generate revenue, it's to make, make it so that your police and fire departments are not responding repeatedly to false alarms. And after the same residence or the same business has three false alarms, as in a typical ordinance, then they start to pay. And we hope that that provides the incentive for them to maybe fix the alarm problem or train the staff that's hitting the wrong code or forgetting to hit the code when they go through the door in the morning. But it does generate some revenue as, as well. Bruce, did you want to talk about any of those a little more in depth?
Just a couple of comments on the website. There's some difficulty getting logs and articles posted to the website. And as a result, when a visitor goes there, they get the idea that the website has been abandoned. And I would suggest to you that, that somehow be overcome, that somebody visiting the website finds an active, transparent website. One suggestion might be, as was mentioned, with a citizen volunteer in the lobby, you could be looking for a citizen volunteer who has website experience to, to kind of do something with that. He may enjoy the opportunity. Relative to surveys, there's a survey thing called a PCI, Police Community Interaction Survey. That's something that could be done either through billing process or online. And it gives the police chief and the community an opportunity to see how the interaction with offices and citizens are working out, what services are being delivered, what could be done differently. Are there any services that need to be provided which are not? Or some that are being provided that do not need to, to be. Relative to the community emergencies, two issues there. One is, we would suggest that the police and fire departments do mutual drills on a disaster. That can be tabletop, that can be reality, that can be different ways. But you really should be having both public safety agencies working together on emergencies. The second part of that recommendation is currently, if you have an emergency, all the community leaders go to the fire department. And that's a very nice room, and it has a generator, but all the communications takes place out of the police station. We would ask you to take a look at combining those so that the communications and the leaders are in the same place at the same time. There may be a need for redundancy, so that if you choose to stay at the fire department, that you can actually dispatch at a high level from that location, if that's what your choice is. On the personnel turnover, I'm sure you know that between 2010 and 2016, seven police officers left your employment. That's one per year. Very costly to lose a trained, experienced police officer. It's not just plugging a new body into a position. The expenses of recruitment, training, field training, et cetera, and bringing that person up to a three, five, seven-year point where they know the community, they know all the players, they know all the locations, and then they're leaving. There may be a reason for that, and I think that the town should find out what that reason is and plug that hole.
Is that significantly higher than other towns?
Yes.
By, can you give us like a...
50%.
Pardon me?
50%. On some other monetary situations that I would just bring up for your consideration would be the cruiser fee on details. Last I looked, it was $10 an hour. That's considerably lower than the actual cost of a cruiser idling for one hour. I would ask the town to possibly take a look at that. If you haven't already, update the towing contract, make sure that it meets the town's needs. When I was here in the spring, it had last been updated in 2008. And lastly, on the issue of details, make sure that your detail rate includes all the costs assumed by the town. Insurances and retirements, make sure that you're not working at a loss on that situation. So the combined, the cruiser expense and the full officer expense should not be coming out of the taxpayers.
What's the right number in your mind, what should we be charging?
Over and above what the officer receives, you should be working in the retirement figure and the workers' compensation figure.
That's updated.
I'm asking for a numerical number, like what, you said we were...
What do other towns charge?
Yeah, that's what I was...
It's $10 now, where should we be?
Well, $10 an hour for the cruiser fee, which is, is, it's not unusual, but we think that $10 probably isn't enough. People say, well, the cruiser's idling. Cruiser idle, I think, represents about 23 miles driven. Then you've got all those other costs related.
Should it be 25, should it be...
Well, for cruiser, I mean, I, just off the top of my head, what's that?
I have a figure.
Okay, go ahead.
If there was a disaster and you were applying for federal funds for disaster, you would go to the FEMA equipment chart. And if you will go there for the 1916, 2016 version, 1975 is what you would be reimbursed by FEMA to put, to put a cruiser blocking a road during a hurricane. That, that may be, that's almost double what you're currently charging. Maybe you don't have to go that high, but I think you should bump it from $10 an hour.
We do update the billing for the officer annually, because we have that part of the collective bargaining agreement. We review it, we bump that fee up. You're right, the cruiser has to be bumped up. One of the issues that we run into is that, this is one of the rare situations where we are using a business model that if you price your vehicle too high sometimes, you may be losing a detail that may not be in the community to somebody else. So we want to make sure that we can...
Right, so what's the tipping?
Right, and that's what we have to...
It's more than 10, but less than 20?
Absolutely, and we'll look at that to make sure we have the right number.
Can you just restate that for me?
For example, if we have, if there's a, a community that needs a detail officer...
Outside of Newmarket.
Outside of Newmarket.
Oh, okay.
Our rate is 10, Greenland's is 5. They're going to go with Greenland because it's a cheaper rate. So we lose revenue on that situation.
I understand that, if you're, if you're leaving town.
Yeah, we need to make sure we're all similar, it's with everything else.
Anything else, Bruce? Well, fire, rescue, and EMS, need to look at adding mutual and automatic aid partners. Is there a difference between mutual aid and automatic aid? Nurture the call and volunteer forces, I know George stands ready to talk about that. You can maintain the current staffing levels, that, we believe that that's sufficient for now. Seek grant funding, and George can speak to some specific grants as a safer grant that will help you nurture the call and volunteer forces. Invest in software that supports efficiency and call operations. This software package called I Am Responding can help with that. Keep EMS fees up to date and review collection rates, the reviewing collection rates. George has a little more about that. And again, like we talked about with the police, implement an alarm ordinance. George?
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to say, of all the travels, and we do a lot of work throughout New England, as Alan said earlier, the good news is you have a very good call department. I know that you have a chief and a, and two full-time Monday through Friday staff. But for people in New England, especially throughout New Hampshire right now, you're a department that people in this region look to and want to know, get answers, how is it happening? So the chief and the department have developed an environment and a culture where people want to belong here. And you're fortunate to have that. Somewhat as Alan said earlier, the problem is that those systems can be pretty fragile. And, and a very good call department could disintegrate quickly. So one of the things in the report we talk about is you need to monitor that with the chief and continue to try to grow it and not just accept where it is. So some of the things that you can do, certainly there's a number of recommendations about trying to expand that. But one of them is, and the federal government will have that available, I think it opens on January 9th, is through the, it's what's known as a safer grant. And the federal government has a grant out there right now that will, and it works better if it works regionally. They would prefer to see more than one community apply for it. And one aspect of that grant will allow you to work on recruitment and retention, retention for call and volunteer departments. One of the areas specifically is it will fund a position for recruitment. So you're actually bringing in a recruitment officer, and you can do that with more than one community. So some of the local communities could, together with Newmarket being the lead in this, would hire and bring on a recruitment person. It would help some of the other communities, but certainly would, would help here. And we suggest strongly, of all the grants that are out there, that the chief and the town look, look to apply for that.
In addition to hiring that position though, too, it allows for incentives. You can write programs that will provide incentives to the people you already have...
Yes.
...in order to retain them.
And, and it can provide for equipment, for new people coming on so that you can help to pay for some of the firefighters' gear. So there's a number of areas that you can do that so that it's, it's, you will expand the department with minimal impact, if any, impact to the community. So we suggest strongly that that is one of the things. It, it happens annually, and this is very timely. I just, I received notification today that the grant period opens up for a 30-day period and starts on the 9th. And I'm sure the chief is, is probably aware of that. So that's one of the areas in regards to maintaining and expanding the call department that you have. The other thing is expanding outside. Because you have such a good call department and a good core department and equipment, and having two, two full-time people during the day, we think there's opportunities to expand outside. And you heard earlier about the, Alan spoke about the opportunity for contracting and expanding. You do that with new fields now. There may be opportunities with communities around you that are, are not doing as well as you, to look to the future. You have to be careful. You don't want to over-expend your own, own forces here so that you can't provide the services to the community. So as, as the call department grows, that's an opportunity. The other area that I want to talk a little bit about, because you're EMS and you have an EMS revenue, is trying to enhance that revenue. an EMS revenue is trying to enhance that revenue. What we typically find in many departments, and we think this is the case here, and I spoke to the chief when I was here last spring about it, is to look at your billing company. Typical with many billing companies, and the billing company that you have, it's, they bill at a 30, 60, 90-day rate, and then if people haven't paid, many times those bills just end up being written off by a community. Being more aggressive by the billing company is important, and that happens by the chief or finance meeting with them and talking with them regularly and getting updates as to how you're collecting and what the percentages are. We'd expect a community like this to be at a minimum of 80% of collections and/or higher. Good communities out there right now that are using these methods that are recommended in the report are well over 90%.
What was New Market, do you recall?
I believe, the numbers that we received were around 78 to 80%. The chief was aware of that. The problem that we didn't have sufficient data to determine how much in the past had been written off and how soon that's happening. And so, again, some things that are allowable. So you may have a billing rate, and forgive me, I don't have it in front of you, but if you have the billing rate, that may be less than the Medicare allowable rate, so you may be billing at one rate and Medicare is reimbursing at another rate. I will also tell you that the state of New Hampshire under Medicaid is one of the lowest in the nation for ambulance rates. Was it about $150 or $160 per call? Medicare is in the 350 range, and a private, your private range is probably around $750.
So Steve, when we bill someone and we don't get paid, is that handled through finance or through the council or the office?
Neither, about billing company. We hire a private company to do collections for us. And ultimately, if they can't collect, they come back to us to review the situation, either we write them off or?
We've done that.
And that's, most of the time it's a write-off because the individuals can't afford them. The individuals may no longer be around, those kind of situations.
I'm assuming they're not giving an incentive for collection outside of the 90-day period, are they?
No.
So there are things you can do, and one of the things we recommend in this report is through the, through a request for proposal to look at those types of things in putting out a proposal for another, for other billing companies and having those as incentives to do that with expectations. The other thing that would be important is to receive monthly and quarterly reports to them explaining what they have done in regards to collections and where they're at. We find that typically in most, for most billing companies, when they have a bit of pressure put on them and they know that they're being watched more closely, that the collection rates seem to be higher rated. When they're not, they simply seem to fall off. And again, if it goes to a collection agency afterwards, they get the low-hanging fruit, they don't work very hard. So there are a number of things you can do.
I was going to say, one of the other things that we didn't mention, I'm sorry.
I've got a question about staffing on this. Is that, I want to stay on the fire rescue, is that okay? You mentioned in the report about the live-in firefighter program.
Yep.
And I know that was discussed here in the past, and I guess my question is, does it work in other communities? It seems like we don't, that there's always the mention or the thought that, okay, you're going to have a bunch of college kids living in the fire station, is it going to just turn to a frat house? Or is it going to actually be a call fire department? And that's just a big concern, I think, the community has.
It's a great concern. What, I will tell you what, the departments that have done it successfully, and New Market would do is, if you work through the program that's done through the technical college, usually you have two students at a time. One is a first-year student, one is the second-year student. So the first-year student has a little bit less responsibilities and many times can't even do structural firefighting, but can do a number of the other, can help with inspections, can go to calls. The second-year student can usually do more of that. They, very quickly, if it turns into a fraternity house and not a fire station, would be released from the program. And you work very closely with the college when you're doing that. I don't know of anybody out there that has not had success in doing that, and many times those people end up coming back to your own department. Sometimes there is no place for them, they go to other places. But it's a great way to get, all you're really providing them besides some training is a dormitory place over their head. The other thing is it gives you some staffing in the evening, and that second-year student who typically at that time can drive and help you to get a piece of equipment out the door. We find that if somebody should come knocking on the door even, looking for anything from directions to having a medical emergency, that you now have somebody in the house. It's a very good program. You already have, and I've met a couple of them when I stopped here in the spring, members of your call department that are, go to college at the university in Durham. They come here because they want to participate. They could go to other departments, so that says something about why they're choosing to come to New Market to participate in yours. And when I talked to one of them, he said, just look at the place, it's a good fire station, they keep them busy, and they keep them trained. So your two full-time people keep the call members from the university active. They looked sharp today I was here. They didn't look, I could tell they were different. I don't think, they had something on, you would obviously tell that they weren't a member, a full-time member of the department, but they were the call members in the college. But they didn't know I was going to show up, so this wasn't a show for me. So I think those are all very successful. What I would say to you, kind of the umbrella is, you've got to continue to maintain that. There's a number of areas in here that we suggested. Again, it's a fragile system and it could break as easily. The other thing that hasn't gotten mentioned, but of great concern is, as you know, the fire chief, who has really created this system, is also your DPW. And you're going to hear a little bit about DPW, and I think in a second, but that is, in the long term, is a real concern. A chief like that is, does not come along very often, and when he leaves, that could be one of those things where a department could have a huge, huge change. So working on a succession plan with that, with the chief as to how he's doing it, how he's mentoring the people below him, so that potentially somebody will be able to step up into that position.
Maybe a second about emergency response ordinance? Again, because that can generate.
Yeah, so some of the things, we also gave some suggestions, you heard a little bit of the false alarm, but there are opportunities, and we've put in there, there for, you can do other billing for emergency responses, for example, vehicle extrications, and there is companies out there that do that. You can, you actually buy, work with their software. They do the collection for you, but it's a matter of the community making the decision that they'll do that during motor vehicle accidents. And I'd ask most of you, if you go home after, you say, I've never really heard of that before, take a really close look at your motor vehicle insurance policy, and there's probably about a $500 line item in there, and most of them that eventually would pay for a fire department to come if there's just a fluid spill on the ground. So there's opportunities to do that. And you don't have a huge overhead and expense for billing because you can, again, you can use these companies to do that for you. And some of those will also do your ambulance billing, so you can bundle that together. So there's lots of opportunities. And we think that there's opportunities because it's such a good, solid department. You've heard a number of times tonight about the regionalization. This could be the core of a region for a fire department, especially in the future if there's, you know, if you looked in the area, there may be a comment made that there's, you don't need as many fire chiefs or as many ladder trucks, as many huge, very expensive pieces of equipment. I'm not talking about New Market, but just in the region. And so, talking to your neighbors and how you could better put that together, and that you have probably the best core department here, you could be the lead in doing that.
Minute about public works. Need to make sure that you're funding a comprehensive capital improvements plan. Consider adding mechanic qualification to the workforce. When I talk about a mechanic, we're talking about a designation of someone that's qualified to do mechanical work. And again, this would be particularly aimed at during emergencies, snowy emergencies and whatnot, to keep vehicles on the road, apparatus on the road. Stabilize annual highway and infrastructure funding. You know, spend more when costs are down, or spend the same on more when costs are down for certain commodities. And participate in collective purchasing groups. You probably do to some extent already, I wish Dave was here, but, you know, purchasing the sand, the salt, but there are many items that you probably haven't considered that can be part of a collective purchasing, including vehicles and, you know, equipment.
We probably should have bought some gasoline a few, couple of months ago.
Yeah, you're absolutely right.
You buy gasoline through the state bid process.
Environmental services, new treatment plant will require, we believe, one new operator. And we suggest considering at that time adding one administrative worker to be shared with DPW. And be sure to commit adequate funding and training to the retention efforts. Recreation, not a lot of concerns. Continue to expand partnering with neighboring towns. Establish a recreation's operations manual. I think a lot of this resides in the head of your staff right now, and that really needs to get put down on paper and operational plans out there. And adopt a recreation master plan as a roadmap for the future. And the last couple of slides, in taking action, we suggest that you select recommendations to implement, identify the low-hanging fruit and revenue generators, and then prioritize. And I'm happy to talk a little more in-depth about that. You know, you can prioritize high, moderate, and low, and some results will be immediate, some will be near-term, and some will be long-term. But then you need to schedule and fund those long-term, long-term goals. I think that does it. I'll just talk a little more about the goals. We provided to Mr. Fornia last week, and I think he just handed it out to you, this compilation of recommendations, is that what you gave him?
Yeah.
So we really reduced this down, you'll see that we numbered them pretty much by, so all of town administration is numbered with a 1, and then police departments, 2, whatnot. And we indexed it back to a page. So that when we've worked with other towns, we've suggested that they take this and they put this into an Excel spreadsheet. And, you know, because we've numbered it, you can, you don't actually have to have a narrative on the spreadsheet, you can just have the number and use this kind of as your master index. And on that spreadsheet, you want to have, I would put them all on there, and I would not necessarily prioritize them at this phase because you don't want to miss some for the others. So I would put them all on there, and then typically the town manager or the town administrator would do that, and then work with the department heads, meet with each department head to talk about the goals that are within their department. And decide whether this can be done, if it can't, why not? And note that. If it can, are there fiscal requirements? Are there time requirements to getting it done? If so, who's going to do it and what's an expected date? So if you view a spreadsheet, you can have these, the recommendations going across in the rows, and you have the columns defining who's responsible for it, what the deadlines are, what the timeframe is, whether there's money involved, and it can be continually updated. And typically, we'd recommend that you meet at least quarterly with the manager or administrator in this case to kind of go through those to make sure that milestones are being achieved and that they're being worked through successfully. Because in the end, you really want to see as many of these be completed as possible. Again, some could be a year or two cycle, some are ongoing, some could be implemented tomorrow and taken completely off the list. So it's really, to us, it's about creating that spreadsheet, working with the department heads, and everything kind of goes down from the town administrator and then goes back up through the town administrator. And at the end of the day, we see how many of these got implemented and for what good.
Just for the council's information, my intention now that it's been from the council is next week, I'm scheduling a staff, department head staff meeting to go over this exactly. Then after that, we'll be breaking down to each department head to go over each of their portions. One thing I'm actually started already is breaking these down further because while everything's under town administration, there are department heads under there that should be actually focusing on those, like the town clerk or the town planner in those situations so that it's more focused. So we are moving forward with it next week.
And the results of all of this are what we need, what we thought we would have by March?
Exactly, is how we're implementing it.
Has that timeline changed at all, or is it?
Nope, nope, because the goal that was discussed with me was to show how we're going to be implementing it in the update. So March would be the first update, how we plan on it. Basically, exactly what Mr. Gould said. What can we, can we do it? If not, why? If we can, when and how? And basically put that in a timeline and say, you know, like, some of them are low-hanging fruits, and we can do it probably.
Well, if you get 12 of these done by March.
Exactly, then we're going to have a lot of these will be taken off, but some of them are longer term. So this is a process, it's not going to be done by March, but as you said, quarterly we'll have a spreadsheet update and show where we are with all the projects.
For the projects that can likely generate revenue, you know, every day that you don't do that is a day that you've lost an opportunity to recover costs or drive some revenue. So, you know, those are the ones that we would really look at implementing first. A couple of those might take an ordinance, and that would take a couple of readings with you folks, and that would be a, what, 60 to 90-day process, probably, something like that. So that's why we say, don't, you know, don't just pick a couple, do them all, and be working through the stages, almost like a Gantt chart, just move through the stages and complete as many as you can as quickly.
And to be honest, the department heads had the draft as soon as the council did. They're already working on many of these, so we're going to see a lot of ordinances coming up shortly.
So one of the things we discussed last time that we hope to maybe vet a little bit was the facilities person that we're talking about. So I had the opportunity to have a brief discussion with you about what your intentions were, and do you want to just review that a little bit for the council?
Do you want to do that as part of the ordinance? I mean, because that's the next topic.
It's fine with me if everyone, is there anybody that has any questions regarding any more of this?
I had a couple of comments on this. As a general question, I would just ask what you've, I know you must do reports and projects like this for other communities. Do you find that there are many sort of pitfalls that communities go through in terms of follow-up and implementation on that, or do you find most people go through the process, most towns go through the process, as we've described it pretty well?
I'd say it comes down to commitment. I think one thing you'd find, and we always get amazed, we will have done a study of, let's say, a police department 10 or 12 years ago, and we'll find that that's still a working document, that they're still working through those plans, and that's really good for us to see. So we view them as a roadmap and not just something to sit on the shelf. And that's why we really strongly encourage you to develop that work plan. But it really all comes down to kind of commitment. And, you know, you have to go into these things fully, and we don't think you should do it like halfway because, you know, especially when you're looking at some of the bigger things, you know, the development of, you know, consolidating the school-town finance, developing that building and facilities manager, those are pretty big things. So they need to be really, there needs to be a commitment, they need to be really, really well-thought-out in advance. So that's really important. If you were talking about the, having a couple of college kids that were going to stay at the firehouse, that has to be well-thought-out in advance, and you have to make a commitment to that. And some of these things could cost a little money upfront, but if you look at it over time, that really, you really get ahead of it. So I think commitment is the big thing. We don't want anybody just to pay kind of lip service to the report. We like to see this stuff actually change.
And the other thing, it was just a semantics thing, but I just, one thing, when you said that we would be nice if someday we could get free dispatch from Rockingham County, and I don't consider something that my tax dollars I was paying for to be free.
You're exactly right.
So I would take exception to that language. And I think the amazing thing is that we are required to pay taxes for if it is currently unavailable to us, as it is for other communities. So, which is different than, as we've said before, than other counties where those that use the services pay a higher amount than those that don't. So I just wanted to.
And should that change? Because our understanding is, and I know that Mr. Fornia and Bruce were at the meeting with the sheriff, they're looking to do an upgrade over there, and I would imagine that that's going to be a rather expensive upgrade, and there's going to be, you know, that'll be at cost. So whether they'll change their formula?
Right, and they'll tax us for us whether or not they allow us to join, right?
But if they, if they actually start charging as a result of that, that puts you in a better position to be competitive to get some of that, get some of that business with them if you decide that you don't want to go that way. So it could, that could be an opportunity for you folks.
Right, right. It would help us to compete if they charged extra for their services, and it certainly would be fairer if we're going to have to pay for it anyways if we were given the option to participate.
And the Portsmouth's and the Salem's and the Derry's?
All the same.
They would all? They would all agree with you.
Yes. And in fact, it seems unsustainable to me that it's otherwise, but we'll see.
I think that the difference here is, we have invested personnel, we have invested funds, we have invested in this infrastructure that I think has given us a phenomenal dispatch center, police department, that whole thing. We have that as an asset here. Timing is right, yeah. I think we're poised terrifically to market that.
I think you'll get some of that over time. I think you're just going to have to wait it out, but you just have to always be ready to swoop in, for lack of a better term, when the time is right with one of these other communities. It's going to be a pain gain thing for them, and if, if you're there and you're a viable option, and you're affordable, you know, I think that that's going to be a real opportunity.
With respect to your grid that you're talking about, you know, doing a plan, we actually did that, I think my second year on the council when we had the, when we passed the wastewater plan. And that went before the voters. And I think it was Steve's first or second year, and we actually had, you know, basically a timeline for things to get done. I think it was under council goals. And I think the big things were addressed, because they sort of had to be. And your point about commitment is, you know, at the end of the day, after, now that we didn't have something this comprehensive, obviously. We came up with a set of goals that the council was working on. But you know, it, it really comes down to, I think quarterly would be a good thing for the council to stay on it, and then they can, you know, keep it a live document rather than, okay, and then it kind of gets lost in translation, you know, after the major things get done. That was my take on it.
And I would expect an update, when you meet quarterly, an update on every item on there that's still pending, to some degree. Either, you know, here's what, we can't do anything until this time, and you know, then we will. But there should be an update to every item. If, if, you know, I was managing that, if I was a counselor, that's what I'd be looking to do, would be to have an update on every item every time, so that nothing does get missed. And we understand, things are going to take, you know, months, many months, year, two years, to get some of these things, and some of them are just ongoing, and if you revisit the list, you make sure that they, they remain on everybody's lips.
Counselor Thompson?
I think that this will also not only go toward this council keeping up with things and helping the administrator keep up with things, I mean, we're here to help, but I think it will also help where we're going to be changing council members. And every time a new council comes in, as it should be, it's getting up to speed, okay, what are our goals, what are our goals? This is a little bit long term, and I think we'll give some consistency to the, to the councils to not, well, this happened on my council, but not on your council. That kind of needs to stop. So I, I think this is tremendously helpful, really comprehensive, gets to the crux of, yes, it's some detail, but it's some big picture things, and ideally will help us be consistent, so that every year, the town administrator, for instance, isn't marching to a different drummer, because personalities can change. And I think if we can agree with this and keep this going with the members that will still be here next year, we can perpetuate that. Like what you said, the Chief Malaski needs to do in his fire department and bring people along to, it's, it's our succession plan that ideally will make things a little bit smoother. So, thank you.
So if we're going to, if we're going to go to that ordinance, Steve, which I have no problem moving, it's scheduled, because we don't have that much stuff. Would you want to basically reiterate for your benefit what your, and then they can, that'd be helpful.
Sure. So we're on, on the agenda, we are now on, under old business resolutions and ordinance and a third reason, resolution 2016, 17 dash 16, amended administrative code, the creation of department buildings and grounds. The proposal before the council at the last meeting was to amend the administrative code to take the division of buildings and grounds out from the Department of Public Works and create a separate department of buildings and grounds. That department, which contains two full-time employees, three full-time seasonal, and one part-time seasonal, would then be ultimately headed by a director of facilities or director of buildings and grounds, depending on what we wanted to title them. That ultimately would be the shared position with the school district. Similar situation what we would have with the finance director, but in reverse, that the employee would be an employee of the town, and we contract that service out to the school district. From my understanding, a counselor discussed with MRI to separate that and continue to have the divisions of buildings and grounds under the Department of Public Works, and that the director of facilities would be an independent department head without, with the department still underneath the director of public works. And if that's.
Just for clarification, I asked, I asked Alan what their recommendation was, because I wasn't sure that, you know, they were going to have a staff of custodial, et cetera. That was, that was the question, it wasn't so much that I suggested this, I thought that was what they were recommending. So I wanted clarification when I met with him, so it seemed, it didn't seem consistent with what they were pitching, so I figured if you could go through with what you're planning to do, then they can at least explain what they wanted.
Yeah, to further, I'm sorry, I know Counselor Thompson just.
No, it's fine, go ahead.
Okay. The reasoning is, for the, the separate department is, is twofold. One, currently, the Department of Public Works has four divisions, has the general administration, highways, solid waste, and buildings and grounds. It used to have environmental services under that, but that was de facto taken out a few years ago, and the, the department head was elevated to, to answer directly to me. By doing this, the individual who, the facilities director would be, one, have a staff to assist them with projects. If we don't elevate this department separately, anytime a, a project would have to be done, the department head would have to go to the director of public works, request staffing to go do a project, instead of having a straight line down. Secondly, you know, I know there was concerns about supervising employees. The intention is, there's still going to be supervisor buildings and ground, buildings and grounds underneath, like a head person to oversee the part-time and the full-time staff. That would be the end of personally, the end of they supervise. And if we consolidate this ultimately with the school, the school would have a head custodian who would, that individual be supervised, and the head custodians would supervise the, the department on that side. My, my belief was, I just didn't see having a department without staff. That the, the department head needed some people to assist in carrying out the duties without having to go, go to another department and requesting permission to use the employees. I know it's, odds are it wouldn't happen as formal as that, but I just didn't want a situation where a department head said, hey, look, I need to go and, you know, I have this project coming up, now I have them working on something else. So I thought it'd be more streamlined that all buildings and grounds answer the director of facilities. The, the director of facilities is still doing the, the long range planning, still doing the purchasing, still doing the, working with finance about the contracts, it's just that the day-to-day operations, they have somebody they can go to. That was my reasoning for doing a separation.
Just for clarification, does buildings and grounds personnel answer to the DPW director?
That's correct. It's a, and, yes, they all do.
So even though it's a separate department?
It is not a separate department.
I thought you said right now.
It's a division of department of public works.
Oh, because I thought at the last meeting you said we have a separate buildings and grounds department now, I thought you.
No, it's a division of the Department of Public Works, like solid waste.
You're saying the same thing, you're just using.
Different, right. There is a department head who oversees those divisions. For example, like I said.
They answer to the DPW director presently.
Correct.
Okay. So that, the question I had was, was that what was in your report? Was that your recommendation for the facilities? Because for some reason, my understanding was that we were looking to hire someone of a higher level who was going to be, you wrote the report, so.
Yeah, that was not the intent of the report, and Steve and I have discussed this after, I think, the, the council meeting, so I don't think anything I'm going to say would be a surprise. We envisioned this as a, as a high altitude, a high level person to oversee some pretty significant things. You know, like, like I said on the slide, facilities related commodities purchasing, coordination of maintenance contracts, developing maintenance contracts that you don't have, writing specifications for things that might need to be bought, boiler systems, whatever it is, you're rehabbing a bathroom, you know, how are you going to spec that out? Who's going to kind of oversee that that job gets done as it should be done? Owner's representative, so to speak, on some of these projects. We didn't see him supervising people or doing tasks, or directly supervising tasks. We think that that person, that this person would just get sucked into that, and it's easy to say that he'd be delegating that authority to somebody else down the chain. But you know, we've all been managers, and we know that somehow you get, end up getting sucked, sucked down into the, the low level supervisory task oriented functions. And I think that takes away from this other position. So you know, and we also want to create a silo. So now you take these bodies that are under DPW now, and they may be shared, you know, I'm guessing that some of the, that those folks that are in DPW that might be assigned to, what is it called now? Grounds? Grounds and maintenance?
Grounds.
That they, you know, they work for DPW, and they may have shared, some shared responsibilities, you know, working across the line, so to speak. So if you create a silo, and you move them over to this other place with other supervision and other management, that just further creates a silo. And we really didn't, you know, that wasn't our vision for doing this. It would be to create this single sole position. You know, clearly define what the role is going to be. And we would envision it as taking some things that the town administrator may fall to him now, some things that may fall to the, the school business administrator, some things that may fall to the finance director, and some things that would fall to the DPW director. So take some of those things off of their plate, those higher level things, that to be honest with you, as, you know, we've all been managers of departments, and kind of those things get lost. The, the higher elevation things tend to get lost in the managing the day-to-day operation, right? So who really is looking at, at writing specs? Who's looking at, you know, all these different things? So we would say, you'd want to figure out what you're going to take, what are those commonalities across those positions? Take those things, build a, a really good job description for that position, look at how the other job descriptions are impacted, because if the school BA is not going to do this thing anymore, then that probably needs to be referenced in their job description. If the DPW director isn't responsible for doing this thing anymore, then that impacts that job description. So lay that all out. And I don't see, and I don't see that there would be a problem with the, the buildings and facilities manager coordinating work done by other departments, say DPW. It's a matter of coordination. And an example that I think I used with Steve is, you know, the, the principal goes into the, the school one day, and it's freezing in the winter. So they make a call to your, your buildings manager, says, yeah, we've got a service contract for that, I'm going to call, I'm going to call the service folks, get somebody right out here. So he knows that there was a snowstorm overnight or in the last couple of days, the path wasn't cleared to the back of the building where they have to get the, the trucks that are going to actually service the, the boiler. So it's a matter of the facilities guy calling up DPW and saying, geez, can we get a loader over there to clear this path to the back of the school so that we can get two service vans in there, so that we can, so we can get right to the boiler? So sure, no problem. I don't see that there's going to be a tug of war over getting that done. The repair is done, maybe they spill, you know, 10 gallons of water on the floor when they're replacing the boiler. So now you've got a little mess to be cleaned up. It probably isn't a big deal to have the principal, the person that's in charge of that school, to say to the custodians, we really need you to go down there and clean up this 10 gallons of water that the, that the heating guys spilled when they did the boiler. I don't see where there's this problem. Another easy example would be, let's say you're going to treat your ball fields for, for insects or something in the spring. And your facilities manager writes a spec, does some bids, gets, company A, they're going to come in and they're going to treat your fields. But the field, the, the lawns need to be cut three days before the insecticide is put down. So it's just as simple as your facilities manager saying, you know, we have a two week window to get this done, the, the ball fields really need to be cut three days before the insecticide is applied, do you think we can get that done? Can you tell me when we can do it, and then I'll schedule the, the pest control people to come in? Nobody's ordering anybody to do anything else, you're working through the channels that are already there, and you haven't created a new silo. So I think that's what we were looking for. Is that, Steve? Does that represent things right?
I agree.
Yes, it does. And I, you know, we, we closed the loop back to Dave Hanlon again, who looked at the DPW piece, and I think that the three of us that had input on that section, this was our intent.
Yeah, and the first thing I want to say is, the superintendent and I, our intention is to have the high level position. And I don't want anybody not to think that, that this position is not a working format. This is the high level. We, Alan and I just disagree on the, I see the day-to-day operations of, there is an issue when a staff person comes in and says, I'm getting pulled in two directions because we'll use the lawn mowing one. Yes, I have a pesticide situation coming down, I need the lawn mowed in three days. Well, that three days is also right before Memorial Day, when the cemeteries are also need to get mowed. If one person's overseeing both of those and a facilities director, they would schedule it correctly. Whereas if you have a public works director looking at doing one thing, and then the facilities director's saying another, you may have two conflicting schedules. Yes, I want to make a silo to have a direct chain of command, that the director has the people underneath him that they can say, go out and do this, versus having to try to schedule with another department. And that's just the, just, just a disagreement of philosophies.
They share vehicles, ma'am? Buildings and grounds in DPW?
They share vehicles because they're both under the Department of Public Works. Are there vehicles assigned to the, the buildings and grounds individuals? Yes. The buildings and grounds staff have their own vehicles that they drive every day, it's not as if they go out in the morning and say, well.
So they don't share vehicles?
No, it's all under the Department of Public Works.
The departments that share vehicles as well?
Right, police department does.
Pumps and?
Right. We share, we share the water, like, water actually has the pumps and the vacuums. If what, if sewer need, if DPW needs it, they call up, they come out and do it.
You know, I, I think that, you know, my suggestion would be that you, you would create the position clearly on paper first. Make sure that you know what the qualification, what's the job description, what are the qualifications necessary for that person? If you wanted to create the department based on that, create the department of one. There's going to be a lot of work for that person to do, probably during the first year, going to have to become familiar with all the systems, what the capital budgeting is for this, what are the, the long range, who needs a roof and when, all of those types of things. And then if everything works out well, and, and the position is sustaining itself, then if you wanted to look at someplace down the road, a year or so, you have a school that's going to be, you know, this person would likely be involved with the, the school project, perhaps, to some degree. If, if it works out down the road, that doesn't prevent you from moving some staff over at that time. But to, to go out of the gate and do it, that's just, that wasn't our intent, and I just see potential issues with that that don't necessarily have to be there if you implement it correctly.
Counselor Thompson, and then Pike.
Could you guys pull up the slide with the facilities director job? It's not a job description, the responsibilities, you had a particularly good slide there. Please.
Sheer facilities manager?
Yeah. So I think that that outlines that we are looking at a, a high level position. I agree with Mr. Gould that this would be a silo. I think, Steve, that in, in saying how, well, if, if the, to use the, the pest lawn thing, if the director of facilities needed to get the recreation fields done in three days, and there was a conflict, because the cemeteries also needed to be mowed, that is exactly what I think will be the problem, because now we need two sets of lawn mowing equipment. I don't think it makes any difference who tells who to do what. I think that there would be that communication, and it would all get scheduled still by the director of public works. The cool thing is that at this point, Mr. Malaski and person acts. The cool thing is that at this point, Mr. Malaski and Person X, Person X would be helping Mr. Malaski with that high-level stuff and not having to think about it. You know, we always talk about not seeing the forest for the trees. Rick's trying to do it all right, right now and doing a heck of a job, but that will free him up. But there's also mid-level range, you know? It's not just over the top, it's down in the weeds. And I really feel like in trying to find efficiencies, that creating a whole other department and then potentially staffing it is going the opposite of what we're trying to do. But that is a function that I see as necessary. I don't see it as a separate department, quite frankly, and some of the discussion, I think centered around that. It's a facilities director. That, to me, is not necessarily synonymous with department head. And what I'm wondering is why it can't be part of the administrator's office. Along the lines of my background is construction. We have project engineers and project managers, but they are, I will say, the white collar side of construction. They're in the office, they're looking out over the thing. They are no more important or less important than the site super. They work with each other so that the site super says, okay, here's what we need to do, and gets it all down, boots on the ground, the blue collar side of it, okay? But this is the white collar thing. And that cooperation has to be there. And each project engineer might be working on three different projects. So there might be, in this case, the facilities director might be working with the chief of police because we need something with the police station, or something with building and grounds, or something with, with the school. Those are different construction projects to me. But that, to me, is a white collar. So I wonder if we can get away from creating a whole other apartment, department, period of, end of story. I think Counselor Pike, one thing that you said last, last meeting, really kind of struck a chord with, with me, whereas you said, well, we can always create the department and if it doesn't work, we can undo it. And that, to me, is exactly what the problem has been in Newmarket for the last X number of years, that we have worked desperately to fix. We have done things, we have done them too fast, thinking they were a good idea, not vetted them, as we are vetting this. And we've had to go back and undo them because things were done wrong, staffed wrong, mismanaged, illegal, because proper attention to detail wasn't it. So the last thing I want to do is create another department when we haven't vetted it, which is why we ended up having, having this discussion now. Again, I think that this position is, is needed, is necessary. We are running two, two lanes. This will take things off of a number of other departments, including code enforcement to some degree. So I think it's necessary. I just would like to know why it, or how it could be part of the administrator's office. Because ultimately, Mr. Forney is the captain of the, of the ship, without flipping over the shoulder clearly. But I would be much more comfortable with that being an administrative function and not having all of that equipment and potential personnel and, again, costs going through it. I just think that is confusion beyond belief.
I want to respond briefly and then I can have Counselor Pike.
I would. I was going to say that we agree with that. That's why we've called it a position. And I thought that the, the only reason it had been kind of morphed into a department was because I thought under charter, perhaps, it had to be. And we would view it, and I kind of was looking at the Salem model a little bit. A number of years ago Salem had a capital projects manager. And they had an awful lot to do with the police department. Didn't have anything to do with schools, it was just all on the town side. The office was at town hall, the person was not part of the DPW department, but did have involvement in roads because they helped do the capital planning for the road. They managed the road plan. They did all these things with buildings and that was a single standalone person at the, at the town hall. And it worked.
Actually, he was the choreographer.
Yes. For all those high-level things. Could I just interrupt? If, nobody has police or fire questions? Can I release these guys?
You can go.
You owe me.
Fun, George?
You owe me.
Come on, man.
I'm fine. I'm heading back to Maine tonight. Way up.
That's just across the river. We will set you free.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you for the opportunity, George.
Thank you so much.
How far in Maine?
Naples.
Oh. I know where it is.
I'm going to Fort Kent, huh?
Been there.
We just finished a job in Holton.
I was going to say.
Heard they've had a little snow up that way.
So anyways, that, that was our vision, was it's a, it's a position. And what you want to call it is semantics as far as what you have to do under your charter.
Counselor Pike and then Weinstein.
Yeah, I, I would, just as sort of my summary comments on this, I think the, the first new thing is good, the good news from, from where I think is the most important thing is we have, as near as I can tell, unanimous agreement that if, that the position we're talking about, this high-level person that's, that's going to bring more analytics to the facilities of the town and to be a shared position between the town and the school, we have unanimous agreement that that is a good thing to proceed with. And I, I think it's important that we do, you know, move forward on that. As far as whether that person also oversees the existing division of public work so that it becomes a department, or whether that, that person does not oversee that department directly, but just is the source of work orders that go to them, is, is, you know, I can see the merits of both arguments and I, I don't really have, you know, I have not had that experience and I don't have a strong position on that. But I, I do in general like the idea of somebody, when I ask somebody to perform and, and do work and administer in a department, I generally will try to give them the chance to do with what they think is best. And then if it doesn't work out, then, then, then I, so that's, that's why I'm inclined to approve Town Administrator's Plan as he's proposed it. It did occur to me, as we've had this discussion tonight, that there might be some value, or at least it seems to me there might be some value, even if the eventual intention is to have public, the division of buildings and grounds report to them, to have some kind of a phased process, that might have some merit. So I had kind of two comments I'd like to, to propose here. One is that we do have somebody here that's actually managed such a person, a facilities director that, that did work on both the school and the town side. And I don't know if you have anything that you think would be useful to us, Meredith, but I'd love to invite you, if it's okay with the...
It's fine with me.
To, to make any comments you might have about the debate that's going on here.
Okay. So, so it is true, you can set that down. It is true that I did oversee the facilities director who worked for the town and the school department in Cape Elizabeth for five years. So that individual actually also oversaw school transportation, which would not be on the docket here, but was a high-level person. That person was writing the RFPs and working through the bidding process in all of our school projects and doing all of those things on that list. Facilities related and commodities purchasing, they were a member of my administrative team and of the department head staff and the town. You know, they were supervising the head custodians in our buildings and they were supervising the maintenance staff, essentially the buildings and ground staff, is your equivalent of that. And we, it worked well for us. On the school side, you know, Lisa and I are sitting here, I mean, I'm, one of the things that we face now is that the head custodians sometimes go to the principals, but largely are coming to me for most of the year and now to some degree to Lisa to talk about how do we move these things forward. And that, that creates kind of another layer of confusion. So I can see if we're adding a, a facilities director into the mix as well, it's going to continue to be, okay, they, to me, that feels very inefficient, at least on the school side. They should be able to directly relay that concern to the facilities director. And the facilities director is going to, if it's a need to move money and it's not within the department that they oversee, where they have access to those funds and they know what the repair, maintenance accounts say, then they're going to come and talk to us and we're going to figure out where we need to move the money from. As opposed to the head custodian talks to the principal who talks to us, who, and then we talk to, or I talk to, the facilities director. You know, I, I understand the reservations and the concerns. I guess, having lived with it for five years, I don't share them. To me, it worked very smoothly and, again, it was a high-level person. You know, as you point out, I think in any of our jobs, on any given day, we sometimes do wind up in the weeds. But part of my job as a supervisor is to make sure my administrative staff aren't getting stuck in the weeds. And I think that's how Steve works with his department heads. You know, I, one of the things I heard earlier, and again, this isn't my place, but one of the things I heard earlier is the concern about your public works director already being spread really thin. And also, you know, covering the fire department. To me, this is a person who takes that kind of load off the plate, who does work side by side. Again, department heads, collegial relationship there, as well as a collegial relationship with administrators on the school side. So I, again, I see it working. You know, I think in the discussions we've talked about, this position, two-thirds of the budget is coming from the school side. I don't know how the school board would feel, but I think there's a shared vision for a high-level person overseeing facilities and taking care of exactly these things. Because right now it is very much spread out across a number of people and it is inefficient and it's costing us more money in the long run. So, that's my two cents.
And my, and my question to you, Steve, was, did you see any values or problems with the phased approach?
No. I mean, my first thing is, I want the position. Position's needed. And if this is going to kill the position, I would withdraw it to, I'd ask the council to withdraw it because I don't want the position to go away. I think basically what, and I'm going to walk a fine line because this is always, you're basically creating a deputy for me that will be overseeing projects by doing this and also assisting other, other places. And if that's the intention, then that's fine and that's...
You've got the position, I think Bill said that, you, the council agrees that the position, it's just how it's going to be set up.
Right. And my, and my thought would be, it was a, a member of the, the leadership team, that it was a department head and assisting the department heads that way. And it being able to coordinate. And exactly what the superintendent said, we have five people overseeing buildings and grounds and facilities right now. We have the finance director, we have the code enforcement officer, we have the public works director, and we have the supervisor of the, of the buildings and grounds department. So much so that I said, you need to start forming a committee to meet every time we need to do something so you guys all know what's going on.
But isn't that because they're all involved in the projects sometimes? Like who's going to write what RFP?
It is. And that's why you would have one facilities person.
Yeah, and, but that person would then take that responsibility.
Correct. It'd be taking the four away. But you'd also have the situation where if you, if you have a person who doesn't have the, the authority to tell somebody to do something or ask them to do something, you're going to have the, as the superintendent said, on their side, it's, okay, do I go to the principal or do I go to the building, business administrator? Do I go to the facilities director? On our side is, do I go to the public works director or do I go to the facilities director or do I go to the town administrator? If the town administrator asks for it first. We need that, by having the silo, it's the chain of command. And that's just my philosophy on it.
Well, just to be clear, and I'll finish my, sort of finish my comments that have gone on for a while and brought in other voices, but I, I will say that if, if we're voting on what you've proposed, you know, I at least will vote for it. So I'm, I haven't contained that. And whether you decided to phase in responsibilities has, has been suggested just to get the person, you could do that. But that's just part of administration. My, my sense is this is, I think, I think we can, you know, it's not so much, this isn't going to, to your comment about quoting me, I don't, Mike, your comment about my comment. I, I don't think this is, would be a huge backtrack if, if at some point you decided that it was better to have the division back reporting department of public works. You can move, you know, it might require council approvals, but departments can be moved around. That's, I mean, I think, you know, we quote a lot, what happens in private enterprising. I sure saw lots of reorganizations when I worked for companies. So I, I don't see this as anything that you can't be flexible in the future on. You may need to reorganize a little bit. And it's good that the town can do that. We have that flexibility. But I'm, I'm inclined to, to allow the administrator to organize it as he proposes and, and see how it goes from there.
Counselor Weinstein.
I just have a couple of comments. First, I just wanted to say that I'm happy that the council as a whole is able to have this conversation with the representatives from MRI because I think that when we sat down to talk about this at our last meeting, you know, we didn't, we weren't all operating on, with the same information. And that's a problem, as actually noted in, in your report. You know, the council has to speak with one voice. And rather than, I think it can be very challenging if Steve is getting direction from seven different people. So, so anyway, so I'm happy that we're all able to have this conversation and that we held it over for a third reading. I think that that was important for, for the council to do. So I personally think that we're on the right track with the proposal that Steve has presented to us. I see pros and cons. I mean, I get exactly, I hear what you are saying, Mr. Gould, and, and I also see Steve's point of view. If I'm going to, if we're going to quote each other...
Why didn't quote you?
I know, I'm going to quote you. You said, you know, Mr. Forney is the captain of the ship. And I have to say that that's, that's the direction that I'm headed in. I think that Steve has the, or we should give Steve the, the leeway to make this decision. Because I could, I, like I said, I see the pros and cons to both ways.
As long as you're quoting me. I mean, he is in, captain of the ship and it, all orders ultimately come from him. However, we as the council...
Yep.
You own the ship.
Yep.
You are. You're the owner of the ship.
And I... That we...
You're the owner, yeah.
That we can talk about as many, you know, we can put up as many Roblox as we want on, on either side. But I, I really think, I have confidence in the people that, that we have working for us. I have the confidence in our administrators and our department heads to make this work. And that includes the superintendent. I think that we're in a great position and we just have, you guys really have created an atmospheric cooperation and I think that we should continue with that. So I don't see it as creating a silo. That's just not the, the way that I view this. I think that it creates a, a specific chain of command that will help us moving forward. So I, I support Steve's proposal.
Seeing all the lights, I'll just make one or a couple of comments. First of all, I, I brought it up last week or two weeks ago because MRI was being quoted as advocating something that I wasn't sure they were actually advocating. I'm really happy that everyone got an opportunity to speak to MRI. I couldn't, can't tell you how gratified I am to, to have that. Secondly, my issue goes to thoroughness. We basically have a job description, excuse me, that's come from Cape Elizabeth. As I said last time, I guess I'll quote myself, I would have preferred, I would have preferred having that job description applied to Newmarket. We do not have an electrician working for the town. We do not have a plumber. We do not have the same socioeconomic situation of Cape Elizabeth. There's, there's elements of this that we can absolutely utilize, which is what I had hoped. I mean, the job description that, that I'm looking at, you know, talks about having principals and working with electrical plumbing and heating. I'm not sure a person who writes RFPs, you know, needs to have done those things. I can see why it was necessary at Cape Elizabeth because they were overseeing people that were doing, they weren't doing those things.
No, we didn't have electricians or plumbers on staff.
Oh, I thought, when I spoke to you, I thought you said you had, that you had the parts...
We had mechanical staff, but we didn't have an electrician or a certified electrician or plumber on staff.
Oh. So what do, I apologize. I thought you said you had a, you had a staff that did electrical plumbing in-house, no?
We had mechanical staff who did basic repairs, but we contracted for electrical and plumbing services externally.
Okay, so you just had carpentry or none of it?
We had a person with some carpentry skills. We had people with some sort of basic...
Oh, so I misunderstood. I thought, I thought, I was told that you had a plumber and electrician working full-time.
Mechanical, to me, includes plumbers, so I probably would have made the same exception.
I kind of remember, but that's okay, that's fine. But I guess my point is, in Newmarket, you know, it is a, a slightly different situation. You know, we don't have a, we don't have a park to take care of. It's just, you know, it's not completely apples for apples. So, all that being said, it's ultimately going to, you know, what I heard last time was if, if... all that being said, it's ultimately gonna, you know, what I heard last time was, if we don't do this, we'll, we're gonna promote someone, you know, to that position, I believe that works now at DPW into that, into this facilities position.
No, I said, if we don't have a, if we don't create the facilities, my intention was, if we didn't have a facilities director, I was going to propose removing buildings and grounds from DPW anyways, to have a focused buildings and grounds division.
And you're gonna promote someone within...
I would just have the supervisor become a department head.
Who may or may not have those qualifications of what I think we're looking for.
Yeah, I understand.
So, you know, I'm not sure the job description has been vetted, frankly. I'm not sure, have the other job descriptions of people whose job description's gonna be changing, have those been revised?
I can't revise those unless I have a revision, because if I revise those, if this doesn't pass, if the new position doesn't pass, and I, and you pass the other revisions, then I've gotta do everything in an order.
See, I think, and I'll leave it at this, I think that's what it comes down for me. I like to see a plan, you know, vetted and annotated before I go into something. Maybe it's a different philosophy. I don't have experience in town administration, but I couldn't do business that way, personally. I would, I would create the job description, I would want to know how it's gonna work before I went into it. And frankly, I can't disagree more with, well, if it doesn't work, we'll switch gears. I just can't, I just don't work that way. There's plenty of things that, you know, you hope will work, that don't, but I would certainly want to put myself in a position to have things thoroughly annotated first. But, hey, it's not gonna be on me. I mean, I, you know, I frankly think we should have someone, particularly the first year, getting up to speed with all the buildings. I don't know how much time, but I'm assuming they're gonna be spending a lot of time working with the school, with the renovation, or the construction. I'm assuming that's a big part of what their first year or two is gonna be. And so, for me, it's hard for me to fathom, than getting involved with custodial and sending someone to cut grass at a cemetery, but that's me. So, that's how I feel about it. I'm supportive of the job, I'm not supportive of the way we're going about doing it. So, yes, I've already stated my feelings. So, seeing nothing further...
Procedurally, they need a motion to approve the resolution.
Yeah, I was gonna, do you have anything to add, since you've listened to us vet this? I'm just curious, did you have any...
No.
Different both sides of the...
Sometimes we get involved with undoing things that other people do. And, you know, that's just, so I sit here and just listening, I'm not really advocating for one side or the other, I'm just trying to look at it from a kind of an independent source and say, geez, I hate to, I hate to do it, and then say, well, we can undo half of it later, when you could just do it sequentially, in a very well-thought-out process. I know that Mr. Fornier said he can't create the job descriptions until the department has created. I think that's what you're saying.
Perfect example is, if I put in a job description that there's, one of their job duties is to supervise.
But that doesn't mean that you can't create a proposed job description. So, in essence, you'd be handing the council, or handing someone, here's the job description for, should this go through, here's the job description for the building and facilities manager. Here's how this job description would look. Here's how this job description would look. Here's how this job description would look.
I think, okay, I think we're talking two different things there.
It doesn't go through.
I think you're, that's not what I was saying. What I'm saying is, if I hire a facilities manager as your recommendation, that's not the same job description as if I do it under my recommendation. Because your recommendation, I would have nobody, there would be no supervisory role. Where under my recommendation, there would be supervisory role, and I need to construct one. I'm not talking about what the chairman said.
Okay, I thought you were addressing, we're still having with that.
At that point, so.
And what I was addressing, when seeing the plan, whether it's implemented or not, so it can be understood, not, we're gonna put the plan together after we implement it. I've never, my brain doesn't work that way, but I'm limited. So, all that being said, I think we've vetted this enough. Why don't you call the roll?
Motion, a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, well, we, you're right.
Well, I had my light on again, too.
Oh, I apologize.
I just didn't want to jump in, because I knew you guys had, whatever.
Am I saying the right thing?
I'm gonna come in on my comment, I hear come in, or whatever. As far as the captain of the ship, I think for me, what I'm also listening to is that we hired MRI as the experts to bring in recommendations. They do this in more communities than we do, certainly more than I do. So, that is by no means, for me, any vote of no confidence in our town administrator. It means we brought MRI in as experts for a reason, and my understanding is that they are not recommending a separate department, at least at this time. There's nothing saying that it couldn't be, but my understanding of what Mr. Gold said particularly was that it being part of the administrator's office would be the way to go, and that would be to start it out. If eventually, we needed to add on to that and add supervisory, a separate department, that's a whole different story. But particularly in the first year, two years, maybe even five years, I don't know, I'm hearing them recommending something different than our administrator, and I feel that we brought them in for a reason, and that's what I'm gonna listen to.
Counsel Bowden.
I guess a few things. I don't think the position is needed, necessary. There are already, basically, a department already for buildings and grounds, so moving it over to a town administrator would certainly free up head of DPW, who already is restrapped as far as what he's doing today. It's gonna be a lot of work, a lot of new job descriptions that are gonna be written out for existing employees, what they're doing, what their new roles will consist of. So, there's a lot of work ahead. There is a job description in here. It is a draft, but it's, there's a job description where it came from, whether it was, I'm not gonna say where it came from or didn't, but it is in here. I think that, again, it's needed, it's gonna help other departments get away from their minutia, it'll help manage the process, and support of it.
Very good. Seeing no other lights, do I have a motion to accept resolution 2016-17-16, amending the administrative code to create a department of buildings and grounds?
So, move.
Wait a second. Discussion has been thorough. Please call the roll.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Bowden.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Counsel Thompson.
Nay.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Levy.
Nay.
Motion passes four to two.
And in the spirit of not keeping you gentlemen any longer, why don't you hit the road?
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I do appreciate you taking the time to come in and explain, you know, go through this with us.
Just, since you're still here, we can still rely on you for the implementation of the overall MRI...
Right.
Yeah.
So, if you need help with anything, you need information, you need clarification, you certainly know how to get ahold of me.
Yeah.
And that's just part of the, you're a client.
Yeah.
So, that's, whatever we can do to support the council and the town in achieving these goals is, will do. All right?
Just wanna make sure we...
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening. Is there any committee reports?
Very impressive.
Thank you.
Sort of minor, but we had a planning board subcommittee meeting this afternoon, so it's, I mean, we're building towards, and I think somebody's gonna be bringing up, we were gonna discuss a date this time, for the joint planning board town council meeting, so...
It was gonna be the second or third week of February, wasn't it, the second week?
Yeah, we're trying to hammer that down, to make sure they're gonna have people.
Yeah, I can tell you that, you know, Val's been very involved with this. Both Val and I are gone at the same vacation period that starts February 7th, 8th, and goes for the next 10 days. So, the second week, neither Val or I would be there, so that might enter into it. But it's all right, I don't mind if I'm not there, but Val would certainly be handy to have around, so. So, that's...
Seeing no other committee reports, which I don't see...
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
I'm sorry. Are there any other possible dates being talked about, or?
This is the first I'm hearing of that both can't...
Well, the last, I was looking, in the minutes, we said that at this meeting, we would try to nail down the date further and get input from it. I know, I think, when we met as a subcommittee, people wondered if one of the first early dates in February might work, that...
Is there any reason, I'm just asking, I don't know how heavy our agendas are generally, although they've been fairly light. Is there any reason we couldn't meet at a minimum with the subcommittee, and maybe the chair of the planning board, to discuss some of these things at one of our meetings, like we just did with MRI?
I think that's actually on the plate, that would rely on the planning board, because...
Would you like to ask him if that's feasible?
That's possible.
We have the letter from Eric, was that the letter from Eric, where he said he would want to do that?
The two boards want to meet.
Right. It's in the charter, right?
It's basically to go over the, you know, the recommendations from Stratford Regional, the EDC. What I'm saying is, we have enough, I mean, you've been on the EDC, I've been on the EDC, Phil's been on the EDC, Val's on the EDC from the planning board. I think she's been the only member from the planning board. I'm sure Eric knows what's going on. They've got all the recommendations, they've heard it all. What I'm saying is, if we could do it at one of our meetings, that might be, just a thought.
That's up to the council.
Yeah, so, what is that, is it the first, is that, our meeting in February, is that on the first?
I apologize.
This is your fifth year. We meet the first and the third.
I'm telling you, is it February 1st?
Yeah, February 1st, I think that may be...
I mean, the first Wednesday.
The 15th? It'll be the other one.
Right, and I won't be...
So, nobody's gonna get in trouble.
I won't be on, no, just curious, is a lot of people gonna be gone the week of February vacation, because the 22nd would be another possible date, that's not...
I would rather not do an off night for a bit, I mean, quite frankly, I just...
You'd rather do...
It's killing me. I know it's tough for people that get vacations, I don't, but I've got, I really gotta not do an off night if I can help it all, so the 15th for me works great.
Okay. All right, but neither Val or I would be there on that date. So, that's up to you.
Could we possibly do it at our first meeting?
The first?
The first, a meeting on the...
I'm just...
That works for me, that'd be fine with me.
If the committee has enough information?
I think...
I'm looking, I don't know what the subcommittee has for information.
Well, I think we're, you know, I'm not sure, well, let's put it this...
Well, I don't think they're gonna have any more information a week later.
Right, that's what I mean. There's not another planning board meeting. The planning board has two meetings. They have a workshop next week, and then they have a planning board meeting. So, the difference between the first week and the second week in February is not gonna matter.
Pretty relevant.
Well, ask them, see what they think, who's gonna come up with it.
I mean, even if...
Our next meeting would be March 1st, too. I mean, that's also an option, if that gives the planning board more time. I don't know if they need it at that point.
Yeah, but I think they might be able to...
For us, too, I think.
Yeah. I think this is not, we will certainly have the draft, because we have them already. All of these things will be available in draft form, which is fine for people to have conversations about. So, I think from that standpoint, not to speak from the planning board, certainly, but I suspect it might work.
We can ask for the first one.
If a few members of the planning board could, I think it would just be good to get temperature, you know, whether it's some of the things that have been recommended to see where the planning board is on it.
I just want clarification, so a joint meeting is off the table. It's now we're asking for representation from the...
Well, no, I would do a joint meeting if we could have a joint...
Yeah, I would say, I would say go for joint, if you can get it, yeah.
What I'm saying is, could we make it part of our, yeah, could we make it part of our meeting, like we, sort of like what we do with MRI?
Yeah, I'll, yeah, we'll see.
It's gotta be a joint meeting, we open and close our meeting, and then we have a joint meeting with that one.
Right, no, I understand that. No, I just wanna make sure that...
Yeah.
That's fine, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's what we're...
If you don't have an issue, that's fine.
Yeah, and if they could have a quorum, or even, honestly, even if they had three people, how many, I apologize, is it seven on the planning board?
It's a pretty big number.
Seven.
So, I mean, if there were three or four people, particularly the people on the subcommittee that sort of know, because this is just to get us up to what...
Right. I think you'd have a good turnout from the planning board. I think this would be a, you know, and one of the things that was interesting, because I wasn't there for that one, is Val mentioned, when we had our subcommittee meeting this afternoon, that the last time they did a joint council, planning board, she felt that the conversation was very productive, and aided the workflow for both, for both boards that occurred after that meeting. So, it was, for somebody that had experienced it, you know, I think there's value, so.
We'll aim for February 1st for a joint meeting.
That's good.
And, I don't think we have anything else.
One resolution.
Oh, I apologize, one resolution. Let's see, authorizing the TA for the block grant. What page was that on, Steve?
My computer just died.
65.
Thank you.
Let's see. First reading, resolution 2016-17-18, hold on a second. It's the first time I've ever read it, so let's hope I don't screw it up too much. Authorizing the TA to an application for the community development block grant for housing upgrades at Great Hill Terrace, and to sign the housing and community development plan, and residential and anti-displacement and relocation plan. Wow, this sounds like it's, we're in a war zone. The plan, whereas the Newmarket Housing Authority is seeking a community development block grant through the Community Development Finance Authority to rehabilitate existing low and moderate income in Great Hill Terrace, and the town of Newmarket is required to apply for these funds on the housing authority's behalf, and a public hearing will be held on January 18 of 17, now therefore be resolved by the Newmarket Town Council. That. The town council authorizes the TA to sign an application for a community development block grant application to rehabilitate housing at Great Hill Terrace. The estimated cost is a half a million dollars to the town council, authorizing the following. Number one, authorize the town, the Newmarket, excuse me, the Newmarket Housing Authority to continue as authorized agent of the town of Newmarket, and all matters relating to community development for this project until it is completed. Number two, authorizes the town administrator to enter into an agreement with the Newmarket Housing Authority for the administration and supervision of this project until it is completed. And number three, authorizes the town administrator to execute any and all other documents with the state and New Hampshire Office of Community Development Finance Authority, CDFA, which is necessary to effectuate the purposes of this resolution. Be it further resolved by the Newmarket Town Council, that the town council hereby adopts the housing and community development plan, and the residential anti-displacement and relocation plan. First reading.
Just for, you'll have all that information shortly, so you can look at it. Just, it's all required by...
I can't wait. And seeing, I don't think we've got any correspondence. Did anybody get correspondence?
I have one.
Counsel Weinstein?
Just one comment.
I would never forget you.
Yeah. I can't close the meeting without making some sort of comment.
Just three more weeks.
As I'm sure everyone remembers, we had a group from the high school civics class who assisted with the election, and we finally nailed down a date to formally recognize those students. And Catherine McGilvery is the teacher's name, and she's the, she teaches the civics class, and will present to their class on the 10th, is that the 10th? At 12:30. And everyone, any counselors are welcome to attend. Steve is, will be there. Chris Hawkins will, hopefully, he's gonna try to attend. And just to recognize the support that they gave us at the election, because it was really much appreciated.
that they gave us at the election because it was really much appreciated.
Any other comments? Do we have a motion which heard?
I just have a question or a comment on the resolution for the community development block grant for the housing upgrades. On your.
Could you come to the podium so people can?
Oh, sure. Okay. Just have a comment on the resolution for the authorization of the funds for the CDBG grant. I noticed that where it says resolution 2016/17-18, it says authorize the TA to, I think it should say submit there.
Yeah. There's a script in there.
So it should say submit. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that the resolution is legal.
Yeah.
Since there's a word missing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we get that amended?
Absolutely.
I'm sure it was my fault, not the scripter.
Don't do it again.
Believe me, I won't be doing it again. Did I get a second for a, do I have a motion return?
Second. There you go.
First, second.
Your turn.
Somebody said yes. I thought to the first.
I'll take one, he'd take two.
Okay. In whatever order.
Thank you.